To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. As part of the announcements with a Zoom format, it's required of me to read the following. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12, pursuant to his executive order 202004, the Hennecker Board of Selectmen is authorized to meet electronically, hopefully for not too much longer. The town of Hennecker will be utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 and pursuant to his executive order of 202004. All members of the Board of Selectmen have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to listen to and if necessary participate in this meeting by following the link below or dialing the numbers below and entering participate in this meeting, entering the, sorry, entering the ID number at the prompt. For those who want to provide public testimony in the public hearing portion of the meeting, you're connected to the Zoom website. You may click on the raise hand icon in the attendees section of the Zoom to make this request. When the time is appropriate, you'll be recognized so you can provide your testimony. For those calling in who want to provide testimony, dial star nine to alert the host that you wish to speak. The host will be unmuting you at the appropriate time during the public hearing portion of this meeting. All participants, please keep your phones and computers on mute unless speaking. For those that need the address to the website, hennecker.org is where you will be able to find both the phone to contact the town administrator as well as the address of this meeting. So, thank you. Like I said, hopefully we don't have to do this too, too much longer. Before we get started, I'll entertain a motion for approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion by Tia. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Peter. Ready to call a roll call vote. Chris Blombach, yes. Tia Hoover.
Yes.
Peter Flynn.
Yes.
Leon Parker. Mr. Osgood.
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. At this part of the evening, it is time for the public comment. Are there any residents from the community that wish to address the board on any issues that are not currently in front of us on the agenda? Please signify by either getting ahold of Tia or Joe, raising your hand on the icon, or just maybe even doing things. Seems like we have a pretty small audience this evening, so. Anybody coming in on the participant chats or anything? Everybody's out of the way. All right, at this point of the evening, after elections, it is important for the board to reconstitute itself. At this evening, we will elect a chair as well as a vice chair. Is there anybody that wishes to participate as the chair? We'll go with the chair first and the vice chair.
Leon has his hand up.
Leon.
This, Mr. Chairman. I move that we continue this year's reconstitution of leadership that I've had.
Second.
Okay. I think you said you wanted to constitute the same board. Leon, you got a real poor audio connection.
Same leadership that we've had.
Okay. And that was seconded by Peter. So, the, the motion on the table is to, I guess, myself as chair and Tia Hoover as vice chair. Is that how I understand the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Are you ready to do a roll call vote? Chris Blombach, sure. Vice Chair Hoover.
Yes.
Leon Parker.
Yes.
Peter Flynn.
Yes.
Scott Osgood.
Yes.
All right, motion carries five, nothing. Well, thank you very much. I'll be honored to carry out the chairmanship duties for another year.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say something before you continue?
Go ahead, Peter.
I just want to thank the chairman and vice chairman and my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen for a very stressful year with the COVID and also a job well done, I thought, considering the circumstances of a lot of events taking place here this year. So, I thank you all. You've been really good people to work with.
Thank you, Peter. That was very nice of you. I appreciate it. And the feeling is mutual and reciprocate. Moving right along, select board rules and procedures. Joe, you want to run point on this?
Sure. So, this is just the opportunity if the board wants to change any of our rules and procedures to go ahead and discuss it. I know last year you, you made no changes, so I don't know if there's anything you guys are looking for for this year.
Are there any select board members that wish to change anything?
Not at this time.
No. Scotty?
No, I don't, I don't think, I already know.
Leon, anything? All right, moving right along. Item 10 is post-election committee assignment.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a note before we begin. There is a committee listed CIP, which is actually appointed by the planning board. So, that can be removed and there is a committee assignment missing, which is the Central Regional Planning Commission, which on the primary and Scott is the secondary.
Very good. If it pleases the board, we'll just go right down the list here as I have it presented here. Joe, did you want to do any opening comments or?
Nope. Again, this is just housekeeping. Again, you can see who the current assignment is, so I don't know if there's changes and what people want, but just let me know.
Very good. If anyone wants to do any horse trading, speak up. We'll start right with Athletic Committee. Peter is currently the ambassador. Peter, do you wish to stay?
For another year, if I could. Yes.
Either I froze up or Peter froze up. Did anybody hear what he said?
I think he said he's going to stay.
Yes.
Okay, Peter's, Peter's good for that. All right. We have Mr. Osgood for the Byway Advisory Committees.
Yeah, I'll stay with that.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay. We're skipping over CIP. We have Community Center Activities. It meets first Monday. We currently have nobody assigned to that. Does anybody wish to pursue that?
Would you, would you repeat that, sir? What was that?
Community Center.
What committee was that?
Community Center.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I'll take that.
Okay.
If, if it's empty.
Peter, thank you very much for taking that. Conservation Commission, currently Scott Osgood. Scott, would you like to serve out again?
Unless somebody else wants it. I will surely keep it. Yep. Yep, I'll keep it.
Okay. Development, that is currently myself. You know, we're going to reconstitute that, I believe, next month starting. I'll be happy to serve if, unless anybody else wants to. Okay. Moving on down, we have the Energy Committee with Peter.
I'd rather not have that this year. They haven't met at all during the last year, but they've accomplished some major events such as the streetlight changeover and so forth, but at this time, it's just an extra night that I don't have and I just as soon surrender that to somebody else.
Okay. Anybody wish to take over energy?
I would have a conflict with conservation, so I can't.
Okay. Peter, in light of the fact that the committee is not too, too active, it doesn't look like there's too many takers for it.
Put me down. I said the same speech last year and I ended up again on it, so.
stepping up in service to the town, Peter Flynn.
That's right, yeah.
You can call me for backup, Peter.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We have Highway Safety, Leon Parker.
I'd like to say that.
Okay. Everybody good with that? I have Historic District, Scott Osgood.
I'd rather not.
Meets quarterly.
I guess Peter, actually.
That's me.
Yep.
Oh, is this a typo on this?
Must be, yep.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to remain on that because they meet in the daytime and that's, that's, that's easier for me on a Monday sometimes, so I'll take it.
Okay. Next up on the committee side is Municipal Records. Tia.
Yes, I'll keep it.
Okay, very good. OHRV is myself. I'll be pleased to continue on it if nobody has any objections. Next up is Planning Board. Tia with Peter as an alternate.
Yes, I'll keep it.
Peter, you good as alternate?
Oh, I, I will, yeah.
Okay. We have Road Management Committee next. Tia and Leon.
Yep.
I'd like to stay there.
Tia, you good with it?
Yep.
Okay. Safety and Loss, Peter.
Yes.
Okay.
Again, that's a daytime. I can squeeze that in a little easy without being out at night.
Okay, and then for Tia's highlight, we need a rep for the Central Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind continuing that and Scott goes as well. I haven't been recently, but I know they have, they just sent out another email for, I guess, a reminder for tomorrow.
Yeah, they do. They meet quarterly.
Okay.
With all the other planning boards. Yep.
Scott, you happy to continue on that?
Yep.
All right.
Well, we could have a planning board member as an alternate as well. Because I'm not on the planning board, so it's usually filled with planning board members. So, if there's somebody else that wants to join, I think that would be good.
I can make a notation for our next meeting.
Yep. That'd be good.
Go ahead. Anything else?
So, Tia will have an alternate on that. Yep.
Anything else regarding committee assignments? Not seeing anything. We'll headlong to item number 11, Swap Shop reopening. Is Kristen or Joe going to run point on this?
Kristen is here. We're going to let her take, take this one.
Kristen. Kristen, you out there?
She's, she's muted. Just unmute. Nope, she unmuted herself.
I'm just, I'm just a little confused. Just, wasn't it Bergeron or is it mix now?
We can't hear you, Kristen.
I asked the same question before.
I think connection issues.
She's frozen solid.
There you go. Kristen? Uh-oh.
Her stuff's not working.
At least she's frozen with a nice smile on her face.
Well, I, I'll pinch hit for her right now while she's not here. I have no problem doing that.
Maybe her signal will clear up here shortly. Go ahead, Joe.
All right, so the swap shop, we're looking to reopen it. Her recommendation is on April 1st, we do reopen it with the same hours that we're open for the transfer station. She is soliciting volunteers like we did last year to help man it, but we will be using some staff probably as well in the event we can't get volunteers, but she's hoping to be able to fill it with mostly volunteers to man it, and we're looking to go April 1st. So, we're just looking for the board's approval to move forward with that.
Now, what was the percentage of hours that it was open, that it was volunteer versus staff? Was it 50/50 or was it 90% volunteer, 10% staff?
So, last year, we only opened it on the weekends. And during the weekends, it was, it was manned for a good chunk of, especially during the summertime. As we got later into the fall is when we kind of teetered off a little bit, is what I would say. So, I think during the week, if we keep it open or the week time hours, it's primarily going to be staff. I don't think it's going to be staff standing in there. I think it's going to be staff just kind of watching as they're doing their rounds around the transfer station.
Okay. Peter, did you have your hand up?
Well, I, I, I support this. However, I do just want to make it very clear that if abuse takes place over there, as it did last year, what I mean by abuse, I mean people dropping off items that don't belong there, people not watching there, no volunteers, and all kinds of junk that's not really recyclable is put there just for the sake of getting rid of it without having to pay a fee. I'm going to, I, they, everybody knows I keep a close watch for that stuff. My other complaint, not complaint, but I think what we have to watch out for is people without stickers coming in from everywhere. I guess I'm not so, I don't feel so bad when they're taking stuff, but I think when they come in and unload stuff, especially if it's unfit for reuse, I have a problem with that. So, it's just a comment I'm making, although I support it. For many years, I've utilized the swap shop myself, both with in and out items. Lately, it's been more things going in than taking out. So, that's my comment, and I, I hope the board supports my comment because we have had issues there, even last year when we had no volunteers for a period of time, and it really got messy.
Can I add into that?
Absolutely. Kristen is back. Well, first of all, you got to describe what Kristen Mix is all about.
So, I'm recently divorced. Mix is my maiden name.
Ah, okay. That clears up. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. You had us puzzled.
You have a strong connection now. Go ahead.
Perfect. So, to address the sticker issue, we definitely need more staffing. I would love to be out there and, you know, switching out stickers for the newer stickers, but we definitely have some staffing issues where we need to take vacations and time off as well, but with me just being the only full timer and everyone else being part timers, I would like some support and, and having more staff, especially the full-time slot that we haven't filled yet.
Okay.
But to, to talk about the swap shop. So, swap shop would be back to its regular hours, and I agree, it's going to be volunteer-based. And from time to time, staff will stop in to check in with volunteers to make sure things aren't getting messy and hazardous for residents to come in.
Okay.
April 1st was the, the date that I wanted to shoot for.
Kristen, the question was asked on the terms of the swap shop. I'm not sure it was fully vetted. What was the percent that was volunteer labor versus paid labor?
Um, like Joe said, it was mostly volunteers last year and it was only on the weekends. It was about 50/50. Nobody stayed in the swap shop. It, we came and go as day went on. Answer that.
All right.
No.
Questions from the board?
How do you walk with that, with staying in the scene?
How do you what?
How do you walk and keep yourself in the picture?
No phone.
You walk, you, you go back and forth between what you're doing, cardboard, plastics, checking with residents.
I just mean the camera, just the camera.
Oh, it's on my phone.
Oh, it's your phone. There we go. Sorry, just curious.
Mr., do you want a motion on this or is it about?
Yeah, I guess the motion is in order.
Excuse me?
I guess a motion is in order if you would like to make one.
I move we approve reopening of the swap shop on April 1st, according to the plan outlined by Joe and Kristen.
Okay. There a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Parker, seconded by Mr. Osgood. Ready to call the roll call vote. Chris Blombach, yes. Vice Chair Hoover.
Yes.
Leon Parker.
Yeah.
Peter Flynn.
Yes.
Scotty Osgood.
Yes.
All right, motion carries five, nothing. All right. Anything else on that issue? Moving along, under the transfer station banner, we've got item 12, which is glass crushing. And Kristen, you go ahead.
Okay, so currently the transfer station crushes glass. And its residents put the glass in blue container at the transfer station, and we empty it two to three times a week. It's about 1,000 pounds of glass each time we empty it. With so much use over the last year, our belt has broken on our glass pressure. Currently, we're not utilizing glass throughout town. It is an option and approved by DOT if we choose to do so. If I'm to repair the glass pressure belt, it's about $1,500.
Good.
It's about $1,500. But I don't want to continue investing in equipment if we're not going to be utilizing the glass that we can in town. So, I'm requesting the support of the board to utilize glass or continue repairing this equipment to continue crushing glass as aggregate.
Thousand pounds a week. Holy cow, that's a lot.
Joe.
More than 1,000.
Joe, how does this go into, I guess, our strategic plan on maximizing the efficiency at the transfer station that the board's discussed?
So, if we were to decide that we wanted to ship out our glass and haul it, our tonnage would go up astronomically, which means our costs would also go up astronomically. Glass crushing is a way that we do keep our costs down because we're not hauling it out of there. I have spoken to the road agent, highway superintendent, and he is on board with trying to use it in certain areas. He has a couple of large holes he plans on digging, and these are going to be free filler. So, he does plan on using it in certain areas at this point, is what I would say. But I do think it's, if we want to keep our costs down at the transfer station and keep our hauling down, we should continue glass crushing.
Okay. So, it's $1,200 to fix the glass crusher?
15.
15.
Well, and isn't that also, you know, don't we have that as part of the maintenance budget within the transfer station department? All right.
It is. So, we're, we have the money to do it. It's not an issue of us coming and looking for really permission to spend it. We wanted to make sure the board was on board with continuing with this practice. It's more what we're looking to do before we invest money into fixing it.
I think we played off of the case that we ought to keep doing that.
I agree.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flynn.
I move to authorize the town administrator to work with the transfer station superintendent to repair the glass crusher and research ways to utilize the aggregate glass around.
See now, Kristen has a smile. Peter.
Oh, Peter's back.
Peter, so Peter, we lost half of your motion, so Kristen, Kristen's frozen on the screen with a nice smile, and you did not have the most flattering picture of when you froze. You want to try that again?
I move to authorize the town administrator to work with the transfer station superintendent to repair the glass crusher and research ways to utilize aggregate glass around town. Over and out.
Very good. There a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Flynn, seconded by Mr. Parker. Further discussion on the motion. Ready to do a roll call vote? Chris Blombach, yes. Vice Chair Hoover.
Yes.
Leon Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Your Osgood.
Yes.
Okay. Joe, you have some sort of double loop on your audio. Do you have, is there any other?
Chris, it's me. I'm trying to switch over because I'm having echoes on mine. So, just give me a minute.
Okay. Am I now echoing?
I think if we're not speaking, we should put ourselves on mute.
All right. Next up, item number 13 is the hiring of Harold Hunt. Thank you, Kristen. I guess is that?
It was her.
Got my notes here fixed up.
I just, I swiped over. Can you hear me better now or not?
Yeah.
It's still a little echoey, but okay. So, next up on the, I love Zoom. Next up is the hiring of Harold Hunt. So, Joe?
So, the board dealt with this in non-public. We should be hiring people in public. So, again, Harold Hunt came. Highway Superintendent approached the board on March 3rd by non-public for the hiring of Harold. We're looking to bring him in as a heavy equipment operator, truck driver, laborer. Although it was presented that he come in as a steps, a labor grade 16, step four, so we're just looking to make this formal to bring along.
Okay, somebody.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to appoint Harold Hunt to the full-time heavy equipment operator, truck driver, laborer, laborer effective March 8, 2021, as initially set for labor grade 16, step four.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Mr. Flynn. Further discussion on the motion. Peter, you're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
Okay, I would like to ask what the rate is now that we've had town meeting? What, and all the increases were what is labor grade 16 in dollars?
Let me look that up. There was, there was no COLA, so no changes happened to the labor grades?
I know it was advertised, I think, for 19 something, but.
It's, it's right around there. Let me just get.
Okay, that, so it hasn't probably changed.
It has not changed.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion made by Vice Chair Hoover, seconded by Peter Flynn. Peter, are you satisfied?
Oh, yes, I am, yeah.
Ready to call the vote? Chris Blombach, yes. Vice Chair Hoover.
Yes.
Leon Parker.
Yes.
Peter Flynn.
Yes, sir.
Scotty Osgood is now missing in action. There we go. Up there is at the bottom. Scott?
Well, we got to, if you left, let me just unmute him.
This is so much fun.
Incredible.
I feel like we're on Earth's day.
I know.
Am I the only one here in this second?
No, I can hear it too.
I, I can hear it as well.
Where the heck is that coming from? All right, well, the motion carries for, Scott, you there? All right. It's academic anyway. It passes four, four zero. All right. Next up is item number 10, is Leo out there? Is he going to run point on this?
He is not. I'm going to take care of it for him tonight.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep. So, at town meeting, the voters gave us permission to purchase a new 10-wheel dump truck.
Hold on, Joe. I'm going to mute everybody on the board, just so everybody's aware.
Actually, Joe, before you, before you do that, Lori, Tia, Kristen's frozen screen there. I wonder if that's maybe messing it up. Can you delete that?
Yeah, I can remove her.
I wonder if that's kind of a source of the feedback. How's that?
Well, I have, I have everybody muted.
Yeah, it's just the three of us right now who can talk.
Oh, perfect. Peter, say something real quick.
Oh.
Yes, sir. How are you?
Yeah, see, I'm not getting any echo on any of that.
Oh.
Okay, go ahead, Joe. Okay, go ahead, Joe.
All right, so at the last, at the town meeting, I'm, I'm hearing it again, just saying it out here. I don't know if you. May I be?
I'm muting everybody again.
All right, so at town meeting, uh, there was a warrant article for the highway department to purchase a new 10-wheel dump truck that passed. Uh, we did put this out to bid, um, and Leo was looking to move forward with the purchase. Uh, we received three bids through the process. One of the bids did not meet the specs that we were looking for, uh, because they did not have the engine that Leo was asking for, um, the, which was actually the cheapest bid. Um, the middle of the road bid, which was, uh, 208,525, uh, once it's all done, had a complete package, which is exactly what we were looking for. And then the third bid that came in was actually, um, the highest and didn't include the body. So again, it wasn't what we were looking for as far as the bid goes. So the only bid that we received that meets the specs is also the one that Leo likes, which works out. Um, so we're looking to purchase the new truck. It's 207,175 dollars. The lettering on the doors will cost 350, and then a new two-way, a radio install would be under a thousand dollars. Uh, for the total purchase of 208,525, which is under the 225,000 we asked for, so 16, roughly $16,000 will be going back, um, towards it. So we're looking for just for permission, uh, for the highway superintendent to sign a purchase and sale, so we can move forward with it.
Okay, questions from the board? Leon.
Scott, I'm mute Leon.
Uh, I just made a motion that we approve the purchase of the truck that's specified by Bill.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion on the table. Somebody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Parker, seconded by Vice Chair Hooper. Further discussion on the motion. Not seeing any, and this, uh, not seeing any, we'll call a roll. Chris Plumbak, yes. Vice Chair Hooper.
Yes.
Leon Parker. Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Ozgood.
Yes. Sorry for that delay.
Now you're, you're real crisp now. You're nice and good audio there. So, uh, motion carries five nothing. Okay. All right, that concludes new business. Now on to old. Uh, item acceptance of board minutes of January 19th. We'll take them one at a time. January 19th.
That?
Yeah.
Is the old business in a proper place to have a discussion about, uh, COVID screening, please, and travel policy?
Uh, it's my understanding that the only way that issue could be brought up is if the side that failed with the wishes to do so, they. So which way did you vote, Leon? Did you vote for it or against it?
I was on the side of four.
Okay, so, uh, if nobody has any objections, yeah, we can talk about it. But Leon, I gotta tell you, we're having a real tough time hearing you.
I get the screening closer.
Can I just?
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, the motion that Leon made on the truck, can we just go back to that? And we really should include the, um, it went to Reed Truck Sales. We really should include who got the bid, just so for housekeeping issues.
All right, Leon, do you want to, uh, read the motion as presented in the staff report?
Can you?
Yeah.
You think I can find it, huh?
I got money on you.
Move to authorize the highway superintendent to defeat a purchase and sale agreement of Reed Truck Sales and complete the additional work for the truck as required. Little purchase cost 208,525. As you authorized it's truck.
Okay, we have a reformable motion from Leon, seconded by.
It's me.
Vice Chair Hooper, roll call vote. Chris Plumbak, yes. Vice Chair Hooper.
Yes.
Leon Parker.
Yes.
Peter Flynn. I saw that I can look for you. Scott Ozgood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five nothing. So now back to what you wanted to talk about. You wanted to talk about the COVID policy for travel, Leon?
Yes.
What, what, what would you like to do?
Uh, we put it on the table, uh, delayed action, they did something where to be considered that the next selectmen meeting had left the, the policy as it was presented. Shortly after that, the Bureau of Environmental Disease Control came out with travel guidance for the whole state. And I feel rather strongly that always worthy of being read on several pages in travel policy ought to be replaced with the guidance of the state because it covers everything potentially in two pages. And real to the issue caused so much trouble after the last action.
Okay, so you wish to.
I would like a motion that we withdraw the final evidence of COVID-19 screening of travel policy that we discussed at the last regular meeting and replace it with the COVID-19 travel guidance of watch 16 set out by the Bureau of Environmental Disease Control.
Okay. Was that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second it for the purposes of discussion. Discussion.
I, I was having a hard time hearing it.
Joe may be able to, uh, bring that policy up on the screen.
Joe, can you highlight maybe the differences between what, what we have and what's proposed?
So I'm, I'm pulling it up right now, just so you guys can see it. Just give me a second from the state. Um, but the, the major changes, um, that were made, and I, I can show it. I have it right here. This is what they did. Basically, the domestic travel within the U.S. outside of New England no longer requires quarantine upon your return to New Hampshire. It's basically what the state of New Hampshire's constitution said. So residents of the state of New Hampshire who travel domestically, I do not have a quarantine requirement anymore. So they, they are recommending that you still follow the CDC's travel guidance, which includes wearing a well-fitted face mask while traveling, practicing social distancing, and still getting tested upon return. Um, but that's the newest from the New Hampshire Division of Public Health, uh, as Leon said, as of March 16th.
And one of the other things is that not supposed to go on cruise ships.
Correct, they can't go on cruise ships, and they're not allowed to travel internationally. If they do travel internationally, go on a cruise ship, um, they are required to self-quarantine for 10 days after the last date of their international travel, except for essential travel to Canada.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been made by Selectman Parker, seconded myself. Further discussion on the motion.
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna make a note. I know some people have been vaccinated and others have not. Um, there is still the press that they could carry the virus back to our community, and I want to make sure that it's, I'm on record as saying, regardless of where you travel, have respect for your colleagues and for your community members, even if you are vaccinated.
So, i- if, just so we're clear, the state of New Hampshire has two separate policies. They also have an employer travel policy, which is separate from their travel guidance. Um, the travel, the employer travel policy is what I presented at the March 3rd meeting, um, which basically allows only vaccinated people to travel, and people who have had COVID to travel within 90 days of having COVID. So, so that's, that's the employer guy, guidance of the state of this issue.
Right, so my, my concern is.
Two separate things that are kicking around.
But here, here's my problem with the whole situation. How can we tell which one of our employees is vaccinated and which one of our employees is not vaccinated? They're not required to report their vaccine status to us. So it has to be across the board, one way or another, um, for all employees. But I also want to make a note, if we go forward with this, if someone is not vaccinated and they're exposed to COVID or they become ill, what we've done in the past of paying them to stay home and isolate, or if they're sick and they've been potentially exposed on the job, we've been paying them for that time without them using their sick or any other leave, that will be null and void.
Well, that sounds like a separate motion.
No, it's all part of the same policy.
Okay.
Am I correct, Joe?
Um, the policy that I had originally drafted did stipulate that. But the motion that Leon has made is further, it's, it's less restricted than the original policy I had put out, out there. So, I, again, I think, you know, if, i- is my, my own opinion, if the board wants to move this way, I don't see why we just don't follow the state guidelines. And whenever the state issues new guidance, we automatically adopt. And if that's how the state, if that's how the board is looking to go forward, if we're gonna be recommending or following what the state says from the New Hampshire Division of Public Health, whatever policies they put out regarding COVID as far as travel, it might be easier just to have that be the town of Hennecker's policy. If that's how the board is looking to move.
Okay, to Tia's point, though, if I understand her correctly, she's basically saying employee needs to quarantine because they get exposed or they test positive.
We're covering it.
So we've, we've, we've stopped covering it with the exception of on-the-job exposures already. So if people are outside and go to a restaurant or on a weekend and they say, hey, we think we came in contact with it, we haven't been covering it anymore. The sick time has been covering it.
Right, but at the same time, if somebody is vaccinated and another employee is not, and there is potential exposure there, because we can't technically pinpoint where the employee has been exposed, right? Regardless, it's, we're not paying for it anymore.
Further question?
The other thing that I could add to include is if we, if we adopted, you know, motion said your guidance of watch 16, we ought to also, what Joseph follow whatever changes they make to that, because there will be.
Further question?
Well, I would also like to make the recommendation that the department had still be aware of where their employees are traveling and still have those employees report that information, especially if they plan to go to what I consider hotspot areas, um, or large areas with potential larger gatherings.
Okay.
Be careful how far you follow that. I don't want to put our department in a position to level the quiz people on Monday morning about where they're going.
Well, that's not what I'm saying, but if they're, if they're traveling and they're going down to spring break, I think we have a right to know that information before they come back to the, come back to their place of employment.
Further question? All right.
I bet if they get tested, uh, if they have gone out of town. Just automatic.
I believe that was part of Joe's original policy.
Yep, and we keep it.
Okay. Any further questions? Ready to call the roll call? All right, Chris Plumbak, yes. Vice Chair Hooper.
With hesitation, yes.
Leon Parker.
Yes.
Peter Flynn.
Yes, sir.
Scott Ozgood.
I'll go with yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five nothing. All right. Moving on to other business. Uh, acceptance of the selectmen minutes. Let's do it one week at a time. We got January 19th.
I have one, uh, correction on page one. Up at the virtual Zoom guests. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, it says Underwood Construction, Underwood Engineering.
Yeah, and, um, there's someone listed as Nick. I believe that was Nick Costello.
Yep, good talk. Further edits on January 19th.
Yeah, A, I believe it's AI, I believe, or AL, that's Allison.
Okay. Further edits on January 19th.
Yeah, I think Allison Morris, M-O-H-I-R.
Okay. To accept with those following edits, January 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Oh, hold on. Page three. Um, first large paragraph, my last name's.
Motion made by Hooper, seconded by Peter Flynn.
Page one. You have Cordell Johnson's, last name is a virtual guest. Oh, my God.
I don't know why that's doing that.
We're gonna wrap this one up.
This is, this is lends to our argument about going back to live meetings, Chris.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Then we couldn't get Scott twice, so we're gonna foul.
All right, so we'll do roll call vote on January 19th. Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper.
Yes.
Leon Parker. Leon Parker.
He's saying yes.
Peter Flynn.
Yes.
Scott Ozgood. Yes, okay, moving along to minutes of January 26th. I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. I'll second by Scott Ozgood. Okay. Ready to call the vote? Chris Plumbak, yes. Vice Chair Hooper.
Yes.
Leon Parker. Peter Flynn.
Yes.
Scott Ozgood. Yeah. Motion carries. Next up are the minutes of March 2nd.
Yep, so under the virtual Zoom guest, DT's is Danny T's.
Okay, other edits?
Um, I think we need to put next to Matt French's and Jim Morris's name, like Chief of Fire and Chief of Police.
Okay. Further edits on the March 2nd. Not seeing any, I'll.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There a second? Motion made by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Leon Parker. Roll call vote. Chris Plumbak, yes. Vice Chair Hooper.
Yes.
Leon.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Ozgood. Okay, motion carries. February 14th, any questions? Joe, you want to do a quick recap if there's anything that, uh, highlights on that?
Um, I think a couple of the good ones to look at are the transfer stations. There's probably a little bit more information down there, so if you have a couple of minutes to look at it. I'm gonna mute Leon. They, they actually have a counter now, so you can kind of see the traffic that's coming in and out of the transfer station. So it's just kind of interesting. They actually have a counter now, so you can kind of see the traffic that's coming in and out of the transfer station. So it's just kind of interesting to see. You can kind of see busier times, things like that. I wanted to bring up the finance department one as well, and this is, I want to talk to the board. I know one of the big pushes has been about getting the vacation time on to the sick checks. And so I just wanted to follow up. The finance director would like to know if we want to proceed with this, or if you would like him to wait until we figure out PTO, so that we're not switching it over. So I'm presenting, asking the board how they would like to proceed with this.
I would do it now, because PTO is gonna be a lot, like, I think it's gonna be a longer discussion as we maneuver some things. But we've been waiting for this for months.
But I get that.
It's a liability issue. Yeah.
But that's why I'm just, so I can give the direction from the board to the finance director to move forward with this. Um, those were the couple bigger ones I wanted to just address.
Okay.
And then I can do the...
I think we found the source of the echo audio. I think Leon was guilty. Got him muted.
Both Leon and Scott.
Not to say we don't want to hear from you, Leon. All right. Not hearing any? Do you want us to take formal action on that, or just...
No, I think, that's fine. I just, again, I just wanted some direction from the board, and I think that's good.
Okay. Are you good, then?
I'm good with that, yeah. I can give the TA report if you'd like.
Okay, town administrator report seventeen, item seventeen, for those following the home game.
So a quick update on COVID-19, as of March 18th, we had nine active cases, which is point zero, 0.18% of the population. We had 15 new cases in the past 14 days, and Hennecker's had a total of 202 cumulative cases, which is roughly 4.5% of our population. The positivity rate had dropped to 1.6%. Highway Department is gonna be transitioning to their spring and summer hours.
I think you had a question.
Yeah, so had there been any additional cases reported at New England College, or have they leveled out pretty much?
From what I've seen on, according, in speaking to them, it's leveled out. I will say that the numbers I'm seeing come through from, so it's the numbers that I'm reporting to you right, this is where it gets a little confusing. The numbers I'm reporting right now come from the state's website, come from DHHS directly, which only really include, doesn't include the rapid test, because the rapid test is not as accurate. The results that we receive for law enforcement and for emergency services include the PCR, the rapid test, which is, brings them up. So when I'm reporting nine active cases, that's what Health and Human Services is telling us. I can tell you that on the other list that I look at from the rapid test, we're up on 18 or 19. But those end up falling off, depending on where they end up testing, once they end up with a regular antigen test, which is why I don't report that until we get it from DHHS directly. I have those addresses. Most of these addresses are what I would consider to be around the college. If that helps, I can't, you know. Doesn't mean they're college students, but it's definitely around the college, is what I would say.
Have we heard from them what they might do with commencement, if they're gonna be live in person, or so our first responders can prepare for that?
I have not heard from them on that yet. I'm happy to reach out and make that conversation.
I would reach out to them. We need time for planning purposes.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep. So Highway Department is transitioning to their spring and summer hours, beginning April 5th. Just as a reminder, that means that they're working Monday through Thursday, six to four and a half Fridays off. Tap Grant, just want to make everyone aware, we did submit for our tap grant. It's been submitted. There was 43 municipalities that also submitted for this, so it's gonna be pretty competitive. In central New Hampshire, in central regional planning, there was five applicants. So there's Henneker, Hopkinton, Warner, Concord, and Bradford are the five from the central regional planning that put in for it. So we'll be starting the process as far as evaluating. They're saying we probably won't know if we know, maybe summertime or early fall, by the time they award anything. Our town meeting results, again, just so everyone's aware, March 9th, we had our voting. We had two zoning amendments, both of which passed. And then on March 13th, the residents voted on the remaining 21 articles. Twenty out of the 21 did pass with the wastewater bond failing. We just wanted to thank everyone in the town, its employees, and sincerely thank the community for their broad support of the budget award articles. We strive to provide the most efficient, efficient services possible to the residents of Henneker. This is... Yep.
Just going back to that wastewater article, have you been able to make some inquiries on if we potentially could move forward with that article?
So.
And at a special meeting, or if we've lost the ball, and we're gonna have to go back next year at a higher interest rate?
We're gonna be taking this up tonight under legal and non-public. Just as a reminder to everybody who is listening, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, the DOT is doing an informational meeting on the Route 202-9 Old Concord Road intersection. It's at 6:00 PM on Zoom. You can get access either on our Facebook page. It's also on the website for Henneker.org, or you can go to New Hampshire DOT to get the Zoom link, and that's what I have.
Okay, any further questions of Joe? Thank you very much. Next up is Selectman's Reports. Let's go with Scott first. Scott, what do you got, buddy? That's a big goose egg. Okay, next up, Peter Flynn, what do you got?
I don't have anything this week, sir.
Very good. Mr. Parker. Nothing? Okay, Tia.
Nothing.
Okay. The only thing I have is Economic Development Committee meeting will resume later in April, and that the OHRV committee met last night, and they voted to have the Kentucky Valley Riders work with some of the folks on Mount Hunger for some of their issues. That's all I got. Next up is public.
I just, real quickly.
Yep.
So somebody just messaged me just to let us know. They were told commencement is gonna be virtually in the May coming up, but fall weekend will definitely be happening come fall, so that's 10/1 to 10/3, I believe.
Very good. Okay, next up is public comment number two, for any members of the audience that wish to address the boards on any issues that they want to wait on. Is there anybody for public comment? Please do a happy dance, stick your hand up, do something, text Tia, text Joe. Anybody for public comment? Anybody? Tia?
Not seeing any.
Okay. Give it another second here, too. All right, well, Joe, do you see anything?
I don't see anything.
Close down public commentary, and we will go into non-public session 91A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, four. Which one, legal or personnel?
We're on the both, so.
Personnel and legal. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight's evening, and we appreciate you participating in the process. Thank you, guys. All right.